Why don't we just start first of all with the greetings to everybody? This is our caucus meeting. And um, uh, hold on.
Oh, sorry, that was me texting you. Don't worry about it.
Oh, yeah, maybe it was Seth going, you know, anyway. Uh, by the way, uh, we have a hard stop at eight. So um, I'm sure everybody's disappointed in that, but we're gonna just have to uh, stop at eight.
Those of us who have to be on the eight P M. Meeting are not a
After this? Oh, okay. Right, so um, uh, anyway, so let's just real quick before we start um, with with Julie. Has anybody read the me, uh, the minutes? Uh, can we get an approval for the minutes?
So move.
Okay, Paul says approved and Gail seconds it. Okay, and then let's do a real quick, since Larry's here, let's do a treasurer's report. If Larry can do that. You have to unmute.
I'm doing, trying to call up my stuff. At the end of February in our account, we had twenty-nine seventeen twenty-one. We've had some donations, we've had a couple of things from the fun run. We had some, we paid Kathy one ninety-six ninety-five for some postcards. We had a hundred and fifty-nine dollars ninety cents. We finally have a Zoom account that doesn't kick us off after forty minutes. And at the end of February, we had three thousand thirty-three eighty-six.
Uh, March.
I mean, March, and so we were still running about three thousand dollars in the account.
So, yes, thank you.
It's a kind of a cursory treasurer's report. And I owe you, Kathy, I owe you a check for, I was trying, just trying to look up the amount for one other thing, I think.
Right.
Um, I can't remember what it was for, but it was about just under two hundred dollars.
Yeah, about two hundred, I think it was, I'm not sure, but yes. So, thank you.
So I was gonna try to come Saturday and bring you the check there.
Uh, good. Yeah, you mean Saturday among with all a thousand, two thousand, we're hoping for a million.
Well, I don't know, are we, are we doing our, our thing Saturday?
Oh, Sunday.
Sunday, we're doing our thing Sunday.
Okay, Saturday, Saturday, we have a march.
We have a march and, yeah, never mind, okay.
And, and Sunday, we have happy hour.
We have happy hour on Sunday. Bring it Sunday for happy hour. I, I, I don't, is anybody here going to the march? I was gonna try to make it.
Good.
Some hands.
Gail and Ginger and Margaret are going. Um, we're gonna Yeah, we'll talk later, but we're gonna leave from Grobner, uh, if anybody wants to join us, and I'll put it in there. Kind of confusing because um, the actual march starts at twelve. Uh, but Jamie Raskin is gonna speak, um, that do the most good has him speaking at, at the mall or right, I think, you know, right there, uh, at eleven fifteen. So, do we come, you know, get there eleven fifteen to hear him speak, or do we wait till twelve? So, we can have a vote on that and I'll send the information out. Um, so, I'm, uh, hi, Mary Ann. I think we are about ready to have Julie Yang. She is a, a member of the um, Board of Education. And I think it's District One, which I know is for me, and I'm not sure, maybe you know how, where District One goes besides Potomac and, um, but Julie Yang is gonna be talking to us about schools.
Hi, good evening, everyone. We tried to confuse people to no end with federal uh, districts, county council district, and Board of Education districts. So, for Board of Education District, I actually represent District Three, which is Potomac, Bethesda, and part of Kensington. The way to think about it is what high school clusters? So, I, I cover Churchill clustered, Water Johnson cluster, Whitman cluster, and B C C clusters. So that's what's in District Three. We're very much half of the deep fifteen area, I think, that all the Potomac side is, is in District Three. Okay, so, I was guessing, what are some topics um, that you like? Um, this year, as a president of the Board of Education, um, I, I sign up for more work at this, this time. So, I, I took a guess and I, um, I say, maybe you are interested in these topics. And then, um, if you are not, you let me know and we can, um, we can, uh, switch. So, um, you might have heard that we have a boundary study, the school system. The biggest task that we are going to engage in is a boundary study. Actually, is, uh, redistricting, if I say, uh, for the county schools. I'm going to pull up a website. Can you see this website? All right, so what it really is, we have several schools. We have built two beautiful new schools and remodeling some other schools. So we need to find the kids to go into these schools. One of the schools we are building that will be completed very soon is the Woodward High School and which is on Old Georgetown Row. Okay, so he has two thousand five hundred seats and Water Johnson right now have over three thousand students. And so we are trying to figure out what students can go to Woodward. And this is the, uh, uh, high school clusters we have included in this boundary study. B C C and the whole Down County Consortium and Water Johnson and Whitman. So that we kind of balance it, uh, that out. We have, um, a building, a beautiful high school in Gaylord Spur that will have twenty-three hundred student capacity and which can help alleviate, you know, overcrowdedness at Gaylord Spur, at Queens Orchard. So these are the high schools that is going to be involved in that boundary study. And we have a timeline. Uh, the timeline is, uh, community engagements, uh, starting now. Mostly in the parent community tonight, they just have an online session. And then in late May, um, we will have some preliminary uh, thinkings, the school system will have some preliminary thinkings. And then it will go out to ask for public opinions. And then, uh, then we'll do a whole round of community engagement. And then in October, they will, uh, come back to say, hey, we have a second proposal of, uh, after hearing from the community, we have a second proposal. And then they would do another whole bunch of engagement. And then in January, the superintendent say, okay, we have done this for a while. This is the plan I'm gonna present to the Board of Education. Then once we got it, we will do another round of the community engagement and we hope to make a decision next year around in the mid-March. So that will go be three cycles to have a final decision. We are only looking at high school and middle school and we are not going to look at elementary school. So, that, this is boundary study. Uh, in a nutshell, I'm happy to answer any questions, uh, later on. Now, uh, in the past, our community has really, uh, uh, have, uh, very curious about, uh, our, um, whoop. I don't think, I don't think I want these things to be here. And I am trying to close it and haven't figured out a way to close it. Okay, um, absenteeism, uh, a lot of student, a lot of community member has asked me about um, uh, students skipping school. So, absolutely, right after the pandemic, um, we have gone through a period that we see a increase of student chronic, um, absenteeism. In Maryland, uh, to define chronic is ten percent of the school days, which means eighteen school days that the student is out, either because they are sick, they go on travel, or they just, they just don't show up. So, um, we are now seeing a good thing is, uh, we have returned to the pre-pandemic, um, pre-pandemic level. Uh, system-wide, about twenty percent. Uh, during the pandemic or right after pandemic, some school, it has gone up to thirty-five percent. Uh, we, we see that, uh, if you look at this chart, uh, our, we do very well in elementary school and middle school and it's harder in, uh, high school. And also, it's, uh, difficult, uh, the number is not so good in pre-case space. Um, the blue bar was last year, the, uh, the orange bar is this year. So we are seeing a little bit downtrend, and this is from, uh, February. I think we are continue to see every quarter, we continue to see some improvement. And this is the one thing we are paying close attention to. Now, among our groups, um, we have a lot of English, uh, students who do not speak English as a first language. It, uh, 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 and students, uh, special education students and low-income students are the group we need to pay special attention to, uh, for their engagement with the school system. So, this is about chronic absenteeism. Okay, another thing I thought, uh, you might be interested, uh, in knowing is, um, immigration, uh, because with the federal government, uh, a lot of community member has asked me, um, you know, have we seen any changes? And I will let you know that I asked the system to pull data for me, uh, on attendance data for me regularly. And we have not seen a drop of students coming to my, our schools. And I even put specific areas such as Watkins Mill area, Kennedy High School area. Uh, we don't see a significant drop and actually no differences. So that tells me that we are students, still, students and families still view school as a safe place. And that's how we want it to be. And I would tell you which day we got the biggest hit for, um, attendance. The day after Halloween. Children have a complicated relationship with sugar. So that's the day we see the biggest dip in attendance, okay? Um, our schools, uh, has been shouted out, uh, has been, uh, has been praised by county council, by Jamie Raskin for being one of the first to really get the immigration resources out to our communities. In our front offices, we have know your rights cards. We have been doing, uh, know your rights session quietly in our school communities. And so that, uh, we, we want the families to know that if their agent come to our schools, uh, they, they are only to stay within the, uh, main office. And our legal department will come out to the school. We will, uh, have to go through and check all the paperwork. We don't disclose students' private information. So we have a game plan to protect our students. And one more thing, federal funding, I think, um, federal funding, um, it's always in the news. I want to give you some idea about federal funding. Uh, overall, overall, we get about a hundred, this year is a hundred twelve million. Next year, projected is a hundred seven million from the sec, federal government. And they are in two big buckets. The first bucket is really the Title One money. Money for students and schools that are, are in low-income area, low-income population. And that's how we have Title One School, forty-seven million dollars. And then there are, uh, uh, funds to, to do some enrichment for our students. There are some funds to teach our teachers how to work with these population. The second big bucket is, um, students with, uh, disability. And that's about forty million dollars we get from the federal government. And also, a medical assistance plan, okay? Uh, that is, uh, what we get from the federal government. And I am actually very concerned that, uh, because, um, Title One and, um, and, uh, special education is written into law. So I feel these funding has some kind of protection, okay? However, uh, things like this Perkins Grant, right, this Perkins Grant. And what is a Perkins Grant? Perkins Grant is a grant, if we want to do any C T E, which is continue, oh, is, uh, technical education, like for example, um, car, motormobile, uh, uh, repairs, uh, medical assistance, um, uh, plumbing, electrician, if we want to do any of these kind of programs, sometimes there's a big investment in terms of equipments. And Perkins Grant is the one that funds these equipment. So to get us, uh, to start up the, the operation. And these, uh, don't have any federal law to protect it. So we, we feel, uh, if we are to lose, these might be the first things that might be gone. That might be gone, okay? And one of the things that, uh, some of you, I don't know how close you, um, you follow the news. The state of Maryland today, the state superintendent say, hey, the federal government just let the state of Maryland know that it's not going to honor the four hundred million COVID relief fund that, uh, that Maryland was going to get. So, um, and the Washington Post say Prince George's County and Montgomery County, uh, have big exposure. And actually, um, I have my staff to check. Uh, actually, we actually have submitted for reimbursement, almost everything. So we have submitted for reimbursement and have been reimbursed, uh, super majority of our funds. Uh, there's about one point two million dollars is in the pipeline. There are seven hundred thousand that have been, that have been submitted to the state of Maryland. And there are, uh, about, uh, half a million dollars that we are waiting to submit. But the good news is, those are all staffing costs. So we have already paid our staff, that we have already in our budget, paid our staff. So our staff already getting paid. And if we get that reimbursement, it will go, was going to go into our fund balance. So, so far, that's not impacting us. However, it might be impacting the state of Maryland. Because the state of Maryland, if you imagine this, federal government has the money. The state of Maryland is a path-through agent to get it to the school district. When the school district spend the money, it asks for reimbursement through Maryland and Maryland asks the federal government for reimbursement. So we have gotten reimbursement from the state, but maybe the state hasn't gotten reimbursement from the federal government. So that part I'm not clear, and but for the Montgomery County part, I'm clear, we don't have a huge exposure. But maybe the state of Maryland has a huge exposure because, um, we're not sure how that is happening uh, between the state of Maryland and the federal government. Okay, so I don't want to end, I don't want to end as such a note that we are, uh, uh, with the federal policy impact. I, I, I do want to say that, um, we see great things happening, uh, in the county, uh, every day. And just, um, uh, I, there's some data that always makes me happy because, uh, the graduation season is gonna come up very soon, right? We are in April, in May is the graduation, uh, season. And last year, when I went to a graduation at Magruder High School, I was so, I used to work there. I was so happy to see that they continue to, oh, cellphone, yes, I will. They continue to like move first-generation students into college. There were a hundred fifty first-generation college students, uh, 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 at that graduation, right? So that's very good, very, very good news. Okay, cellphone, did I miss talking about cellphone? I would love to talk about cellphone. Okay, cellphone has for a bit taken over a lot of our kids' lives. And it has become the extension of their palm, right? It's always in their hand. And we had a pilot program this year at, uh, eleven schools, uh, high school and middle school to do a, a way-all-day program. And I went to several, I went to visit several of these schools, sat down with the students' focus group and staff focus group. Uh, it's over the, 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 the conversation was overwhelmingly positive. Even for students who I thought, high school students, who I thought I would have a lot of pushback. They share, they feel they are more present, they use the word more present. They feel like they are less destructive during class. And they also feel like they are less fight in their school because people are not on their cellphone. And so, uh, we have a conversation on the board table. And next school year, the school district is going to have a system-wide cellphone regulation that every school is gonna be consistent. And our thinking is that, uh, we, we will use common sense. If a family would need to reach their students, they can still call the school. And the school will reach out to the students. And if there are special situation of that day, the students can tell the teacher, today, I really need to keep in touch with my family. Right? I need to step out to the hallway to use my phone a little bit. Those things, absolutely, we should trust our students, help them make good choices. But overwhelmingly, we need to say phone away during instructional time. And that, we're going to enforce that, uh, across the district. Okay, so I think that's about all I have prepared to talk about. And let me know if you have any questions, um, yes, Larry?
I was on mute, sorry, um. I think we can assume that the Trump administration is gonna continue to cut funds from Maryland. We're not his favorite state.
Nope.
Um, I, I, I know that their county executive is, has a proposal to increase property taxes. Um, I know a lot of people are getting laid off, our next-door neighbors with, um, N I H. And a lot of his staff has gotten laid off.
Yeah.
There's gonna be a lot of pressure in the county. Um, just for people to afford to, to, to pay their bills.
Right.
What are we doing and how are we doing to minimize the need for additional funds in the form of tax increases? Number one, and number two, to prepare for, I don't know where they're gonna come from, but there's gonna be other pressures and other cuts going forward.
Right, very good question, Larry. Um, so, as a Board of Education member, right? My job is to advocate for our school district. But I'm also very mindful of the financial challenges, um, our communities face and want to be good steward of the money. So when we were, when the superintendent was, uh, making his budget proposal, we asked him to find savings first. What can we flatten at the central office? We want to protect the schools, all the resources at the schools, personnel at the schools. But what can we do in terms of central service to, uh, flatten the organization a bit? So he did find seven million dollar savings in that area. However, our budget this year is still enormous because the state is shifting some responsibility from the state level to the county level, right? And, uh, because state is also facing a financial challenge, challenge. And also because our population's need is higher. So that is where we're making a sus, a really huge investment in special education. And that's the area we have been lacking. Now, um, I don't get a say whether we raise property tax or income tax. I don't get a say in that, but I also want to put it clear to community members. Property tax collected go into a general fund. Property tax go into a general fund. And the general fund then is used for however the county see fit to use. I just want to clarify that.
So, do we have any questions? Any other, uh, questions? I thought, as Gary's not here. Uh, Michelle, um, I, I know that Gary had, oh, I know that Gary had a question. You don't know what it is, do you?
Well, I'm here.
He's here. Oh, okay, what was your question? Cause I know when you made a comment when you signed up, do you remember it?
What are we doing, what are we doing and what's the school doing to give civic education to our students? We find that, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can.
Okay, okay, we, we, we find that, um, there aren't as many youth engaged actively in, in what's going on, um, in the government. Uh, certainly the budget things you just talked about. One would think you'd have high school students quite interested, not just in the, the boundary change, but how the money is being spent and, and the telephone issues, the phone issues and so. Are there, is there a requirement for civic education? That was the first question, and I have another follow-up.
Okay, so, very, Gary, actually, we have very engaged youth. It will blow your mind, our youth will blow your mind. We have a high school county-wide regional student government. And, and, and they have a delegation. And I just went to their smart nomination convention. They actually do rent choice voting. Convention and, and hundreds of kids, right? And then they pick the final two and give it out to all students to vote, all middle and high school students to vote, their student member of the board. That is a really good civic education, right? Voting process. And we also have a very robust middle school, middle school student government, also hundreds of students. And every year, the board members try to attend their meetings and also invite them to come and meet with us. And our student members of the board also have a student advisory council. I envy her, him very much. His advisory council is eighty-five students. I don't have eighty-five people advisory council, right? So, so we actually have very engaged, uh, youth. Now, every year, the Board of Election comes to all our high schools to do voter registration. And, and, and the, and the student government is, uh, uh, a student government sponsor and our school administration also do a push. So to tell these young people how important it is to register to vote, okay? Now, we also have, uh, some other student group. We have a student climate council.
Okay.
Specifically focused on environmental issues, and it's a very large group. Uh, they actually hold, on Earth Day, they hold a county-wide climate summit every year.
Okay.
So have another student group is, uh, called Stud, Student-Athlete Leadership Council. Those are all student athletes, that every high school, uh, and middle school have representative and they get together. And most of their task is how to be, how to, uh, push our positive, how to push our positive message to have the kids work together, right?
Yeah.
And, 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 and so we have these, now, can we do more? Absolutely. Um, most of the civic education happen in the high school level with our government courses, which is mandatory. You can take on-grade level, honors level, or A P level, right? And that itself is not enough. A lot of it happened in social study and history courses. For example, in middle school, they cover immigration, right? They cover immigration. And so that is an opportunity to talk about how government function, laws, regulations. Um, and there are community groups that's trying to especially start even younger in our elementary In our elementary school, there is a non-profit, uh, nonprofit called the Civic Circle. Uh, it, it specifically target uh schools, elementary. With high Hispanic Latino population. Because they understand that these children might not get these kind of um knowledge from their home. Uh, their immigrant parents that don't speak, uh, mostly don't speak English as a first language. So they, they are targeting. And so to, to, in songs and dance, make participation a fun thing. Uh, so these kids can be uh agent of change in their family, in their community. But, but Gary, we, we do need to do more.
My, my second part, and I, I don't wanna belabor. Um, is there a prohibition on um like having a young Democratic or a young Republican or a young independent? Bob's in high school? Or are there?
We don't have that. I believe uh I would take BCC as an example. When I work at BCC, they have a, a young Republican club. And I think they also have a young Democrat club. I don't know whether it's still uh in uh. Practice at BCC, but I don't think we prohibit uh those clubs.
That would be good to know, uh, because I think that's an area of engagement that the Democrats in Montgomery County may in fact want to. Be involved in because we wanna get more young people involved in the, you know, the election process.
Well, I'm going to write that down as a follow-up question. I, I don't think we have according to our policies. I don't think so, but are there any, any in existence?
Churchill has one right now.
Churchill has one right now, right? Yeah.
Yeah. I just know cause they showed up to our NIH event.
Okay, 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 yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I think, I think, um. I think Andrew, didn't the student members last year make a list of the, of the clubs?
I think they tried to, and I think they couldn't find any that were active at the time. I'm not sure. When the Churchill one became active, but I, I was under the impression as of last year, there weren't any that were standing. And, and now there is one.
But they did look into it.
I think they looked into it, yeah. They couldn't find one.
They might be nonpartisan um conversation clubs. They are those, they talk about uh political issue, but they are nonpartisan.
Right.
Well, somebody also told me that a lot, some of the clubs might not call themselves democratic, but what you said. If you look at the issues that their support, I mean, they might say support women's rights. That, you know, it's their democratic leaning club.
Right.
Well, thank you, Julie. I appreciate it.
Oh, absolutely. Andrew, you have, you.
Yeah, just, just uh quickly, um, if you could pull up this slide again on the, the um boundary study. It, it looks to me that some of the currently existing boundaries are non-contiguous. Is, is, am I understanding that correctly?
Okay, so which one do you want? So this is the Woodward one along Old Georgetown. And it's including these high schools, okay? And, and then it's the Crown at Gathersburg, that's including these. So.
Yeah, it looks like the, the Clarksburg one is non-contiguous. Um, and the Gathersburg one and the uh Richard Montgomery. Or, or sorry, Wooton. All of it, all of those districts look like they're, they're broken up, uh, like they have. Is that correct?
This map is not accurately depleting the, the school boundary? Hmm.
I mean, they, they, they might be that they're non-contiguous. I just, I wasn't sure if that was something that was allowable.
That could be. No, no, no. See, this is the, this green is Gathersburg. But Gathersburg has a pocket that's carved out, which is Watkins Mill. See how that is?
Yeah.
And then this big pink thing is, I know, Clasper. Clasper is not, that's right. That's, that's three years or four, four years ago. That was a big, before the time I go, that was a big um controversial contentious. Boundary study because they carve out this piece to go to Clasper.
Yeah.
Right.
No, I mean, I, yeah, I, I, I get it's complicated. I was just curious. Um, I was just curious about that. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. But um I, I do have to a- address this though. Um, what this boundary study is, is to find students to go into the two new high schools, okay? What this boundary study isn't, this boundary study isn't to trying to ship kids from Pools Mill to Blair. Or from Kennedy to Clarksburg. I, I want to clarify that, right? Because there are misinformation starting to circulate it out there, saying that's what this boundary study is. But that's, that's not it. That's not it. The intention is to use adjacent. Adjacent uh schools to find kids to go to fill the two new high schools. That's what this is.
Yeah, no, I, I appreciate that. Thank you. I, I know particularly the, the Moms for Liberty folks are, are stirring up. A lot of resentment over things like this and, and making sort of wild allegations that are not based in fact. Um, but I, you know, as someone who went to Seneca and was in the district and it lives in the Seneca district. Right before they did the, the redistricting, I know that, that one was controversial, but it had to happen because Seneca quadrupled in size. And we needed to make sure that it was, uh, you know, that we weren't severely underpopulated while Clarksburg was severely overpopulated. So I, I appreciate that. Thank you.
So does anybody else have any comments? Uh, Ginger, I thought you had a question.
I was just interested in the latest on financial literacy.
I knew you were gonna ask that, and I.
That's my favorite topic.
Update for you, right? I, it is one of my priorities to, uh, for financial literacy. While we still don't have a consensus to add it as a mandatory credit, I say we need to increase access for it. And actually, in June, the school system is supposed to report back. My specific request is an online module for an online module in Spanish. Uh, that covers financial literacy. Because in our school districts, there are thousands of students that are English level one and English level two. And thousands of them are in the high school and they don't have the language um capacity. To, to take this course in English. And they also might not have room in their schedule because they trying to get all the graduation credit in a short period of time, right? To, to graduate. And they have take English as a, a second language courses, so they, they, they don't have room. So uh my specific resolution is on the school system need to create a Spanish online module. So that these students will still be able to get the information before they leave our high school. And that is due back in June. So Ginger, that is.
So I, I'm not sure what you mean when you say there's no consensus on mandatory requirement. What does that mean? Is it still under debate? Is it not going to happen?
Okay, this is a good question. So in Maryland, out of all the school districts in Maryland. There are seven school district has made personal finance or financial literacy as a graduation requirement. Montgomery County has not yet made that move, mostly because there are a lot of graduation requirements. That um, that our students need to do. We have especially a much larger population of students who need to take English classes, for example, language classes. Before they can, they can even get to the graduation requirement courses. So at the moment, we are advocating for the state to relook at some of its graduation requirement. For example, do the students really still need to take that antiquated technology course? That course was developed twenty years ago. It was basically to tell student how to use a computer. But our third graders know how to use the computer, right? So do we still need that? Do we still need that? Or also, uh, for example, can the journalism class be counted as an English credit? Uh, 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 some states will allow that, but Maryland does not. So if we are able to evaluate, we ask the state, take a whole look. Uh, at your, all your graduation requirement, that, at that time, it might make sense to us to say, hey. We can put uh financial literacy as a requirement uh for our students. So it's still pending.
So again, how do these other seven school districts do it?
Very good.
How come they can do it?
Uh, it's really um, uh, local decision. They might have a different population that they don't need to take as many. Let me give you an example. They don't, they can have a population that don't need to take English courses, not so many English courses, right? Uh, as before they can get to graduation requirement. They might not have as many students who are interested in music, right? Uh, uh, and want to take music all four years. So it really depends. Or they might not have as many students who need to work and take internship in the senior year. Uh, and, and, and it really is where the district want to place its priority. Uh, what we ask is, I think, I see this as important. And I think my colleagues thinks it's important, but how to get it done, uh, we haven't have a consensus to how to get it done.
So, yeah, thank you very much, Julie. And uh, I really appreciate your coming. And uh, giving us information uh that we really, you know, wanted to know. This is really crying times. And everybody is really concerned about education. So um, you know, so thank you very much.
Yes, anytime, anytime. It's always a joy to be with all of you. Thank you.
Yes, and since you're, you know, part of D fifteen, you know, come, come anyway.
I know, I know. I know, I will, I will. Thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you.
See you soon. Okay, bye-bye.
So as, as I, I mentioned to everybody, we have to uh be careful of the time because um they're gonna kick us out. Um, I do want to, we had the treasurer's report. Um, Andrew, do you have any comments related to uh Central Committee?
Uh, no substantive uh updates at this time. The party's working on strategic planning. Um, and uh, we had a good event uh at NIH a couple of weeks ago. And um, and we're looking to support more events like that in the near future. So nothing uh that I am aware of at the moment. Um, Rochelle, correct me if I'm missing anything. I'm not sure if I see any other Central Committee members on here. But Rochelle, correct me if I'm missing anything.
I think you're good. Um, if I think of something, I'll.
Well, the, the only thing, Andrew, um, thanks to Rochelle, but I'm not speaking for her. It is, you know, on Saturday, we had a, a good all precinct meeting.
Yes, thank you.
And, and uh.
Oh, yeah.
And Sarah did a fabulous job of putting together, documenting. The numbers game of what we need to do and our goals for the next year. And I wanna know, how do we implement that? What is she doing next to be able to work with D fifteen? And our, our leadership, our executive committee of D fifteen, to actually accomplish what those goals are?
Which is kinda tricky for Andrew to answer.
I can take a whack at it. I can promise I will have all the information.
The Central Committee must have approved of those numbers and sanctioned them in some fashion. And so my question is, what is the Central Committee gonna do to make sure that we're following through as individual districts?
Yeah, so the numbers, right, the, the numbers um were not something that we took a vote on. That was something that was uh, that, that plan was created by the precinct organization. Um, which is a subsidiary of the Central Committee, obviously. Um, and, but, but I think we all fully subscribe to those goals, even though that was not something that was uh voted on. Um, my understanding is there is a steering committee being put together. Um, a- and Kathy, I don't know if Sarah has talked with you about that yet, but if she hasn't, I'm sure she will. Um, because I think she's speaking with each of the caucus clubs and chairs um about. What the steering committee is gonna look like and, and who from each district will serve on that um, that steering committee. Uh, my understanding is she's also in the process of creating some canvases. Uh, that was what we had sort of rehearsed for over the weekend. And those canvases are going to be, I think, sometime over the summer, early summer.
So in terms of the steering committee, yes, Gil and I actually were in the steering committee before. And uh, I would guess that um, that Lisa and I will be joining the steering committee in the future. So, uh, yeah, we will follow. Thank you to those who um came. We have a bunch here that were uh in person, like Paul and Jenny, Rochelle and Gary. Uh, uh, and Trip uh were, were um in person. And um, so, and I don't know who was on the Zoom call, but it was definitely worth, worth um. Uh, you know, going. It was uh really, I, it was enjoyable to see everybody. So, um, okay, so that actually, right now, I see Lisa coming in. And just in time, maybe you can uh give us an update on the Fun Run.
Sure, I can, let me see. Oh, shoot, darn it. Oh, wait a minute, can you see me? Okay.
Yes, yes.
There you are. Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, yeah, so um, the Fun Run is, is um, you know, coming in stride. Um, we've got, it, it's, so the Fun Run is a fun um, three k, three miles slash five K run. To raise money for caucus activities in the um upcoming election cycle in twenty twenty-six. Um, right now, we've got um a number of donations that you'll see when you get on the run sign up. Um, we've got a number of sponsors, a total of five. And um, we've got a few uh people have already registered to run. So we've made a good start. We've got about what, six or seven more months to go before the race. Our goal now is to um, uh, try to get more sponsors because those are the bigger ticket. Um, donation or, or um, you know, giving levels. So we're reaching out to possible um, uh, supportive uh small businesses and medium-sized businesses. Um, that might be interested in um contributing. And we've also reached out to all of our local elected officials, the county council. Um, uh, our um M D C C C um members. Um, and uh, I think we're gonna reach out to a few school board people. Julie Yang, who, who spoke, she's um, she's a sponsor. Um, so yeah, and, and we've got a planning uh, uh, committee. Who gets together once a month and we'll get together more frequently as we get closer. Um, and right now, we're really drilling down on um, you know, getting the early sponsors. And we're also starting to coordinate um invitations to uh, you know, high-level elected officials. To come and do the pep rally for us. So the run sign up is there. Kathy's been circulating it through her um. Newsletter that goes out every week. If you have any questions, you can reach out to Kathy, you can reach out to me. And if you'd like to um, uh, you know, volunteer for a planning committee, you're more than welcome. Um, and uh, and that's about it. So happy to answer any questions if anyone has any questions right now about the event. Oh, and so far, we've raised almost a thousand dollars.
Yes. So, uh, yes, thank you, everyone who has uh have contributed. I really appreciate it. Um, so uh, related to uh future events, we have this hands-off protest coming on uh April five. And my plan right now is to uh leave Grosvenor at eleven fifteen. Um, and um, and then go on down. If anybody wants to join us. Um, I, you know, let me know and we can all go down together. However. Uh, I can guarantee you that if you go to any metro station, you'll feed, find other people heading. However, uh, I can guarantee you that if you go to any metro station, you'll feed, find other people heading down there. It's it's uh definitely uh what to do this Saturday. Uh, on Sunday, we have the happy hour at uh King Street Oyster. So please, I'd love to have you join us, it's uh three o'clock. And we have our town hall coming up on the sixteenth. So um I'll be sending information, but mark your calendars on that. Um, do we have uh, just by the way, um, up county, the Dems Breakfast Club is gonna have April and April. And that's uh April twenty eighth. So uh I will be putting information on that. So if you wanna uh join us and um join April, um, be sure to do that. So uh how, we're into comments, does anybody um have any comments? They want to um bring up related to uh what's going on today? You know, what, how's it affecting you? Um, any suggestions? I'm just opening it up to any, anybody who has anything to say, Rochelle.
Um, so I just wanted to mention, Andrew, that there is, there's a, and everybody is welcome. There is a Central Committee meeting this coming Tuesday at six thirty, right Kathy? And Kathy will be there.
I'm I'm always there to.
To help with.
It'll be mostly a regular business meeting, there's not gonna be anything particularly exciting.
Well, we don't know, the peanut, the peanut gallery, the guests have been uh quite exciting at the last couple of meetings, so. Um, and but if you are gonna come, please look at the newsletter and please try, please try to register ahead. But you can still come even if you don't register ahead.
Um, anybody else have any comments that they'd like to make? My goodness, this quiet group.
What time is it up? Is your
We're we're gonna make our eight o'clock.
Well, Saturday is Rochelle's birthday. Early birthday, Rochelle.
Thank you.
Finally hit twenty nine, huh?
Yeah.
You'll have thousands of people celebrating with you if you come down to Washington.
I should be downtown, everybody's gonna say happy birthday.
D fifteen should actually have a chorus and sing happy birthday when we're there.
There you go.
So you're gonna miss Raskin then, because you said he's gonna be there at eleven fifteen to speak at the rally.
Right, so I'm kind of thinking we'll leave at eleven fifteen and get there more like twelve o'clock. So, uh, any other comments? If if not, we shall adjourn, does somebody want to uh motion?
Oh, are you gonna meet like at Grosvenor in the in the little building? Or where are you gonna meet at?
Right outside the um uh station, right? You know, inside, not not uh, not in the garage, in the actual uh where the.
Oh, okay, okay. Yeah, that's a good one, right, where you buy your tickets?
Where you buy, where you buy the tickets, yeah.
Right, and Kathy, I think we were saying that we're leaving at eleven fifteen, so uh.
Well, actually, what I was thinking is eleven fifteen, but we'll actually leave on the dot at eleven thirty.
Oh, okay, so we'll wait for, so let people know, we'll wait fifteen minutes, if they're not there, then we're gone.
We're gone, yeah.
Okay.
So, so that's why I'm saying eleven fifteen. So everybody should think in, think eleven fifteen. So, okay, anybody? Um, shall we adjourn?
Move, we adjourn.
Adjourn, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Bye.
Thank you.
Okay.